Good evening. Welcome to a meeting of North Penn School District's Board of School Directors, January 21st, 2016. Gentlemen, would you run our show?
Hello and welcome to this North Penn news update. 2016 marked the convening of the 11th Simulated Presidential Nominating Convention at North Penn High School. Started in 1976 and held every four years, the convention gives students the opportunity to experience the democratic process used to nominate a presidential candidate. This year, the students created their own political party, the Millennial Party, which best represented their current political beliefs. The state caucuses debated planks to create the party's platform, and then went through the nominating process for a presidential candidate. This year, the new Millennial Party nominated Bernie Sanders for president and social studies teacher Steve Henry as vice president. You can watch the convention in its entirety on our YouTube channel. Bridle Path Elementary students honored Dr. Martin Luther King with a morning of service for those less fortunate. The students decorated paper breakfast bags and filled each one with items such as granola bars and fruit, which were donated by the Home and School Association. The bags were then donated to local charities, Mano on Main Street, and the Mitzvah Circle Foundation to assist those in need in our communities. At North Penn High School, the Air Force JROTC students were honored to host retired Colonel Howard Snyder. Colonel Snyder gave a presentation on his firsthand experience protecting the White House, the Capitol Building, the Federal Building, and the city's firemen in Washington DC after the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King in 1968. Over 750 singers from across the district gathered in music for the 6th Annual North Penn Choral Festival. Fifteen elementary and middle school groups performed two selections each, and then watched in awe as the high school's men's and women's choirs wowed the audience with their fantastic performances. All singers gathered together, 750 voices strong, to fittingly perform "Lift Every Voice and Sing" for the grand finale. And finally, January is School Board Appreciation Month, and we would like to publicly recognize all of our school board members, present and past, for their service and dedication to the North Penn School District. Thank you to each of you for all that you do. Be sure to head over to youtube.com/NPTV for all of our programming 24/7.
Welcome to our regularly scheduled action meeting. This meeting is being videotaped for community cable channels. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the board should be aware that they are being videotaped. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania's Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the board during the meeting. To assure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the board come to the microphone, state their name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments. To allow time for all those who wish to speak to the board, the board president may ask the individual to yield the microphone to the next speaker. And now, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
All right, welcome. It should be noted that the board did meet an executive session tonight, January 21st, 2016, from roughly 6:00 PM to 7:20 PM to discuss matters of potential litigation and negotiations. We're going to move forward with our favorite time of the action meetings, proclamations. Dr. Dietrich.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is our pleasure this evening to recognize a number of student groups. The first group we'd like to recognize are members of the 2015-2016 North Penn High School Girls Water Polo Team, and with us this evening, we have coaches Katie Grunmeyer and Molly Robinson, and the students we'd like to recognize.
Hi, hello, good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Dietrich and the rest of the school board for recognizing our team's accomplishments this evening. Our Girls Water Polo Team rose to occasion, and they accomplished quite a feat this year. They were PA State Champions with an undefeated season, 29 wins, zero losses. It's only the second time in school history that we've had a team go completely undefeated and win the state championship. Girls also won Suburban One League Eastern Conference Championship, and then obviously went on to defeat Cumberland Valley 7-6 in the final to claim the state title. Six of our players were awarded All-State honors, and it was actually the first time ever that four players from the same team were nominated to the First Team All-State. So, that speaks volumes for the type of players they are. I'm going to introduce our team players now. The first one up is Amy Bauer. Amy was a First Team All-State, First Team All-Conference, and First Team Suburban One All-League nomination. All right, Leah Brown. She was also First Team All-State, First Team All-Conference, and First Team Suburban One All-League. Erin O'Neil. She was one of our captains. She was also First Team All-State, First Team All-Conference, and First Team Suburban One All-League. She was our team MVP, and she was also one of three finalists for the state MVP. So, next player Shannon Quinn. She was also captain of our team, and she was First Team All-State, First Team All-Conference, and First Team Suburban One All-League. Kalen Evans. Kalen was Third Team All-State, Second Team All-Conference, and Second Team Suburban One All-League. Caroline Gillespie. She was honorable mention All-State team. She was Second Team All-Conference and Third Team Suburban One All-League. And our goalie, Rosalinda Rivera. She was Second Team All-Conference and Third Team All-League. Next up, Aaron Heebner. Maddie Kerper. She was also a Third Team All-Conference. Megan Zartman. She was also named to the Third Team All-Conference team. And Mae Vellin Wyden. She was also a Third Team All-Conference. And with me is our assistant coach Molly Robinson.
I would tell you what, we'd like an opportunity for the full board and administration to congratulate each and every one of you. Would you like to come through? Would you guys join him at the end?
Sure. Thank you.
Yeah. Congratulations. Where are you going? You know where you're going? You know where you're going? You know where you're going? Anybody give you something? Congratulations again. Did it call you M? Congratulations. Congratulations. You know where you're going? You know where you're going in the future?
Thank you.
Let me give you this, guys. Thank you very much for your hard work, and it's phenomenal, and I hope they give you a beautiful banner so we can hang up in the hallway.
Thank you.
If you need one of those big trophy things, we got one of them for you too. Another round of applause for these guys.
It is also our pleasure this evening to recognize members of the 2015-2016 Boys Water Polo Team. With this evening, in addition to the students, we have Jeff Fakish.
First off, I would like to say thank you for giving us the opportunity to recognize these student athletes tonight. The Boys Water Polo season was a pretty interesting one, considering last year we graduated 17, but overall, our seasonal record was 23 and 7. We went 12 and 2 in the division, second place for the Suburban One League, first place Eastern Conference, and we got second at States. There are a few individuals not with us tonight, but I still would like to recognize what their accomplishments were. First up is Gavin Hennessy. He was our goalie. First Team All-League, First Team All-Conference, First Team All-State, and he was this year's Team Most Valuable Athlete. Up next is Derek Friday. He was First Team All-League, First Team All-Conference, First Team All-State. Corey Smith. He was Second Team All-League, Second Team All-Conference, Second Team All-State. Nico Kandshubas. Second Team All-League, Second Team All-Conference, and Third Team All-State. Mike Sisko. He was Third Team All-League, Second Team All-Conference, and he was honorable mention With us not this evening is A.J. Patterson. He was Third Team All-League, Third Team All-Conference, and he was this year's Pennsylvania Water Polo Rookie of the Year. Up next is Harrison Freel. Shane Marcus. I'm sorry, Ryan Yocum and David Grover are not here. I just started looking at the individuals. Absent this evening, Aiden Daly. And finally, Zach Owens. The 2015 State Runner-Ups.
Nice, and applause. Guys, we're going to ask each and every one of you to come through, so everyone should congratulate you. And Mr. Fakish, could you follow them up, please?
Of course. Thank you.
You know what school you're going to? You know what school you're going to? You know what school? You choose the school. Where are you going? Congratulations. You know where you're going? All right. You know where you guys are going? What school are you going to? Where are you guys going? You know what, you're going to get out of here yet, or what? Congratulations, sir. Welcome again. Mr. Fakish has always got this one for you. Enjoy, and see you guys soon. Another round there, please. Mr. Fakish, does he need a trophy case, or do we got enough? You have enough trophy cases? I'm going to get one for the girls, so.
This evening, we also would like to recognize a member of the 2015-2016 North Penn High School Golf Team, and with us, we have Dave DiValentino.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm talking about one of my golfers, so we can forget the snow, and picture us on a nice, warm golf course right now. But this is Ron Robinson. He's a junior, three-year member of the team. He has been one of our top varsity performers on the team over the past two years, and this has been his best year so far, accomplishing a few different goals. First was the Penridge Continental League match, which had eight of our conference teams, 64 players, and he won the individual low score by shooting an even par .36 on the front nine, and that helped our team win the team title for the second year in a row. His performance throughout the season was very consistent, and if you play golf, you know consistency is the key, and he helped our team also win the conference championship this year, which we haven't done since 2009. So out of 171 golfers in the Suburban One League, Ron finished 11th for the season with a handicap of 1.34, which is lower than mine. So I have some work to do. But he qualified for the Suburban One League Championship, and he shot an 81 at that tournament, which he wasn't happy with, but it allowed him to move on to the District One Tournament, which included all the golfers in Bucks, Montgomery, Delaware, and Chester Counties. This is a two-day tournament, and he placed 16th out of 120 golfers, and that advanced him to the PIAA Regional Tournament at Golden Oaks Country Club. And unfortunately, he missed the state tournament by one shot, but we know that he'll definitely make it to the state tournament next year. So, our area and region is extremely competitive in the golf sport, and we've had a lot of great golfers on our team, but we haven't had a male golfer reach the regional level since 2004. So that shows you how hard it is to get there and how well Ron did this year. So, I present to you Mr. Ron Robinson.
Come back here, we'd like the full board and administration to congratulate you. Dave, would you join them there?
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Also regarding recognition, this is School Board Appreciation Month, and it is a time when we honor the nine individuals around this board table who give their time and expertise to advance the North Penn School District, its schools, students, and community. And I know from personal experience that it is a rewarding position, and that it supports the education of our youth. I also know that it often is underappreciated, so I hope our community will take a moment to join me in thanking our board members both individually and as a group. And with that in mind, at the school director's seats are certificates recognizing their service and commitment to the North Penn School District. There are also handmade thank you cards from various 6th grade students in Eric Heebner's class at Oak Park Elementary School. So if you can look for that for just a moment.
You can zone in on that, it's pretty cool. It's a very nice card.
And there's a letter from the school's principal about the cards, and I'd like to read this letter. Letter reads, "At Oak Park Elementary School, we recognize that school board members are ordinary citizens, they're our neighbors, providing a vital service dedicated to the North Penn community and its students. Several Oak Park 6th graders recently learned about the roles and responsibilities of the Board of School Directors. They explored how the board establishes a vision for the district education program, maintains the structure to achieve that vision, and provides accountability to the community. These students talked about how each member is an advocate for continuous improvement in student learning. They were interested in how board members are required to study, discuss, research, and collaborate so that informed decisions can be made on countless complex issues. The 6th graders noted from the website that school board directors provide leadership for academic programs and achievement, district funding and budgets, school facilities, and many other critical issues. Your service ensures that decisions about North Penn schools are made by people who are familiar with the needs of the community. The board members, whose students were surprised, were unpaid volunteers, spend hours considering complex issues like student achievement and school finance, working with lawmakers and educational experts, meeting with district administrators, teachers, staff members, parents, guardians, and students, and attending school and district events. It was evident to students that you generously give of yourself to ensure that decisions directly impacting North Penn schools are made by representatives of this community, people who are close to the schools, and know the teachers, parents, guardians, and students. You face difficult choices and shoulder critical responsibilities with the ultimate goal always focused on the future success of the district's students. Board members are advocates for students and voices of public education. In recognition of this service, the students have sent their thanks for your hard work, dedication, and commitment of time, which has been noticed and is truly appreciated and valued. As a connection to Liberty and Law Program brought to school by Judge Andrea Duffy, the students would also like to invite representatives to visit Oak Park to share with the entire 6th grade the work of school board directors. On behalf of Oak Park Elementary, students and staff, Happy School Boards Directors Month, respectfully Douglas Povolitis, Principal, Oak Park Elementary School." So thank you very much for your service. We hope that you enjoy those cards. I think we got a shot on our television there of Mr. Shapinski, perhaps some others, holding up the cards, but they are very much appreciated, so thank you, students, for doing that, and most importantly, thank you, board members, for your service to this community. It's very much appreciated.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. It's nice to be acknowledged. Okay, we're going to move forward with our agenda. The next thing on our agenda is the Audience of Citizens. Anybody wishing to speak to us, please feel free to step forward, state your name and address, and sign the Audience of Citizens logbook. One additional thing under other business, I would like to bring up the topic, and I'm not really sure we need a vote just yet, but to find out if they need any more award cabinets at the high school. Can we check into that in case we need to bring that back up for a vote? It's always a pleasure to spend that money. It reflects well on us.
Good evening. My name is William Patchell. I reside at 404 Bonnie Lane. It's in Montgomery Township, but I have a Lansdale postal address. It's really wonderful to see the type of students that actually has the ability and the time to participate in these sports, and it says quite a bit for the district and our input and the environment that we provide through our tax money so that these things can occur. And I'm sure that other districts throughout the Commonwealth look to this district for inspiration and guidance. Although some of the districts are challenged, they don't have the resources, they don't have the expertise and the staff that we are able to acquire. But, on a more somber note, we now enter into our tax season, and I was looking, just looking it over, and I saw a figure of $250 million. I assume this is like a wish list, or, and that'll be scrutinized over time, and last year, I believe it was $230 million, so that would be quite an increase of things that I'm sure every department that's involved in the district would like to obtain so that they would be able to do greater things. But I have to remind you, I'm 69 years old, and I'm probably older than most everybody on this board, except for a few people, and I have to tell you, as you know, that the Medicare is not real good. The cost of the drugs and the co-pay, I ran into one gentleman, he's taking a drug that costs thousands every month. He's not very happy. I hope some people have a little empathy to realize what senior citizens are going through. And the federal government has many disbursements, but you know, they just couldn't find even a dime for Social Security, and we got no raise. But we did, I got my tax notice from Patty Gallagher, and after much debate and, you know, prudent spending, which I'm sure everybody feels that that was the most prudent course of the budget, this is pretty high, and I want you to realize that there must be 20,000 people in the district that are over 65. Life for them is very hard. We have a diversity in income and asset base. I'm sure some of the people who live in the Hatfield Borough, Lansdale Borough, would surely love to even make half the salaries that some of the people that reside in Upper Gwinnett and Lower Gwinnett, who are probably doing very well. We have a diverse tax base, although when you open your 401K, I'm sure you'll see that it's a much diminished amount, which tells me that between 3 and 4 million people are planning to retire. The bottom line is, I want my money. These insurance companies and pension providers, you know, we have to perform. The money's got to be there on the 31st. It has to be there on the 1st. You can't run around and say, "Well, we'll get you later," but that's another topic. When we talk about expenditure for infrastructure, and the new, and the GO bonds, and the, I'm sure a lot of senior citizens would love to be here and participate in the dialogue, would be able to speak before the board in an intelligent way, and bring their little piece of the, you know, their input, to bring it to your attention. These people have paid, and paid, and paid, and worked. I'm sure they're very happy, and the district is well-recognized in the real estate industry. I believe Montgomery Township is rated number 58 in the entire United States as a place to reside, and I'm sure a lot of people would love to live there because the cost of housing, and the neighborhood, and the school district, and employment, it's really something like, "Wow, I wish I could live there, and this is why I moved here like 30 years ago, and I haven't moved, and I don't plan to move." So, I'll wrap it up. Please, when you're debating this future, let's, I know you want an increase, but let's diligently, line by line, department by department, do you really need it? I mean, I'm willing to kick in, you know, but you have to justify everything they do. I know on a state level, now, there's a dysfunctional group of people. We must be the laughingstock of the United States. When are you going to settle the budget? I don't know. It's ridiculous. At least, at this level, the foundation of all democracy is your school board, and this was provided by the founding fathers, that they thought it would be a good idea to have a well-rounded population that was intelligent, they were able to read and write at absolutely no cost, which was kind of an unusual thought back then. So, go over this, have dialogue, debate, and think about the senior citizens. It's pretty tough out there, and I'm sure there's a lot of these elderly people that are really getting by on very, very tiny stipends, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, we're going to move forward with our committee reports. Let's start, oh, I'm sorry, you're right, thank you, apologize. Recommend approval of the minutes of the December 17th, 2015, action meeting, as well as the minutes of the work session held on January 12th, 2016, as circulated. Motion by Mrs. Leonard, second by Mrs. Charnock. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Minutes are approved. Sorry, now let's move into committee reports, and we'll start with the Education, Community, and Policy. Mrs. Leonard.
Thank you. The ECP Committee met on January 11th. On the agenda were two recommendations for extra duty changes. The Robotics Club is a district-wide organization that was reestablished in October 2014. At that time, two advisor positions were established, but each was classified differently. One- One position was an extra-duty position, and the other was an independent contractor position. After a recent review by the Business Office, Extra Duty Committee, and the ECP Committee, it is recommended to reclassify the independent contractor position to an official extra-duty advisor position. The other activity recommended for a change is Future Business Leaders of America, due to the increased responsibilities of the FBLA and its advisor. For the last two and a half years, FBLA, excuse me, has been responsible for supervising Knights Nutrition, which sells healthy snacks and drinks every day after school. This has become a very popular and valuable service to students. It is recommended that the group level of FBLA be increased from a Group 2 to a Group 3 and become effective for the 2015-16 school year. The committee also reviewed plans to utilize the Montgomery Virtual Program, MVP, for summer school and for course advancement. This resource will offer a cyber opportunity for both programs. All courses' advanced work will be through the completion of MVP courses, with the exception of Japanese, which will follow the previous guidelines. Summer school will offer both the traditional face-to-face and a cyber option for course completion to provide flexibility for students needing to complete coursework during summer school. The committee also received an advertising update. Ads have been added to the eMatters newsletter. Also, EdgeClick has sold 30% of the spaces available on the North Penn website, resulting in proceeds of $10,000. Efforts to secure sponsorship that would financially support the Iron Knights Triathlon are underway as well. The next ECP Committee meeting will be February 8. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for ECP tonight? How many members are there in the Robotics Club? Was the independent contractor somebody that gave them stuff?
No, it's, when we established that club last year, the agreement was that we would have one advisor from North Penn High School, one advisor from North Monco. Originally, last year, the North Monco advisor was hired under an independent contractor contract, and in conversation with the Business Office and some others, we decided that it's more appropriate to do an extra-duty, a second extra-duty position than an independent contractor position. The cost to the district is the same, it's just a difference in the type of contract.
And I just want to say that that Robotics Club, from last year to this year, now there's a waiting list to get into it, so it's really a valuable resource, and they do a great job.
Any other questions? Okay. Finance, Mr. O'Donnell.
Finance report for Thursday, January 21, 2016. There was no Finance Committee meeting in December. The next Finance Committee meeting will be on Monday, February 1, at 6:00 p.m., and please note that this is a rescheduled date and a report. Thank you.
Any questions for Finance tonight? Safe Schools, Mrs. Charnock.
Thank you, Mr. Shipinski. The Safe Schools and Support Services Committee met on January 11 and discussed the following. Mr. Wilson updated the Safe Schools Committee on recent Safe Schools activities that were completed in the fall. One of the activities included a presentation to the administration by Mr. Steve Beck, who is the Montgomery County Safe School Coordinator. Mr. Beck explained the purpose and how to set up an emergency operations center in case of an emergency. Excuse me. This activity will be followed by a tabletop exercise in February with the administration led by Mr. Beck. The Safe Schools Committee discussed security upgrades to the high school and ESC proposed by the administration. These security upgrades would include developing secured entrances and enhanced security features to both buildings. The committee requested that the administration formalize proposed security upgrades and provide estimates to Mr. Sharaki, Director of Business Administration, to discuss the projects with the Finance and Support Services Committees. The proposed upgrades would be in place prior to the start of the 2016-17 school year. In addition to the security upgrades, the replacement and purchase of new surveillance camera servers were discussed. The existing server that hosts a number of the elementary school surveillance cameras is no longer supported and has had its problems recently. The committee requested that the administration review additional cameras at some locations, formalize the proposals for the servers, and provide estimates to Mr. Sharowski, Director of Business Administration, to discuss the upgrade with the Finance and Support Services Committees. The proposed upgrades would be in place prior to the end of the school year. The next meeting of the Safe Schools Committee is scheduled from Monday, March 14, 2016, at 5:45 p.m. at the ESC. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions for Safe Schools? Personnel, Mr. Kerr.
Yes, Personnel Committee met in executive session January 5 from 5 to 6 to discuss matters of personnel, negotiations, and potential litigation.
Thank you. Support Services, Mr. Diazio.
Support Services Committee has not met since the last board meeting. The next meeting of the committee will be Monday, January 25, at 6:00 p.m. here in the ESC. End of report.
Thank you. Any questions for Support Services? North Penn Educational Foundation, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. We have a brief report this evening. The foundation did not meet in December, but we are looking forward to a busy February, which is deemed "Foundation February." As part of the celebration, we are currently seeking staff from each building to coordinate small fundraisers to support the foundation. This is our second annual Foundation February, and last year's efforts raised more than $5,600. We are hoping for more schools involved this year, equally more fundraised for our schools. The foundation will also begin planning for its annual online auction to be held in May. Soon, we will be asking local businesses, restaurants, museums, spas, and more to donate their services and products for this very popular event. And as usual, the foundation has been busy supporting programs in our schools. Two recent events we helped to fund were the simulated convention that we just saw this evening, and the vocabulary ball at North Penn High School. Thanks to everyone for making both a great success. If you have any questions about the foundation, you can contact Christine Libarowski at the ESC. Thank you.
Thank you. North Monco Technical Career Center, Mrs. Leonard.
Thank you. The Joint Operating Committee of the North Monco Technical Career Center met yesterday, January 20. On the agenda was an explanation regarding the calendar and snow days. It was explained that North Monco will follow the majority of the sending schools to determine whether they will be opened or closed on school emergencies. There was a presentation of a check for $4,763, which was donated by Mr. Chip Ostrowski from Metal Institute. He is a marketing executive for the Metal Institute, and he is also a recruiter for machining and manufacturing. He explained that contrary to popular belief, there are numerous manufacturing and machinist jobs, but not a skilled workforce to handle the workload. He said that there are good opportunities for women in the manufacturing field, and that North Monco has 100% placement rate. He indicated these jobs are good-paying jobs and encourages guidance councils to discuss options in the machine and manufacturing fields. The budget will be presented to the superintendents next month, and then to the JLC board. There is an open house scheduled for February 11, from 6 to 8, at the North Monco Technical Career Center, and I would encourage anyone interested in other options to attend that open house. It's just an amazing place. Thank you.
Thank you. Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, Mrs. Murphy.
Thank you. We also did not meet in December, but we will meet next Wednesday, so I look forward to delivering that report next month.
Thank you. We're going to start with the superintendent's report, and we will be taking item F first.
Thank you, Mr. President. We do have guests with us this evening, so we'd like to bring them forward, representatives of the public financial management, and also our bond council. I'll go ahead and read the recommendation, and, because it is a bit different than exactly what's printed here in this agenda, now that we have exact numbers, and then we'll hear the presentation before taking action. The recommendation is recommend approval of the resolution presented by bond council for the issuance of non-electoral debt in the amount of $9,840,000, for the purpose of providing funds for the costs of planning, designing, acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping additions and improvements to Montgomery Elementary School, the costs of planning, designing, acquiring, constructing, furnishing, and equipping additions and improvements to other buildings and facilities of the school district, and the costs of issuing applicable insuring bonds per item BA 5, A through X. And with that, we have our representatives.
Well, let's do it this way. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
So, moved by Mr. Diazio, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. All right, let's start the conversation. So, why don't you guys give us the information we need?
Good evening. My name is John Frye from Public Financial Management. I'm the district's financial advisor on its debt. About a month ago, my colleague Scott Sheer was here before the board, at your board meeting in mid-December, to get authorized for the bonds. Today, I'm here with the green-colored packet before you to present those results of the bond sale that we had today on the internet for an auction for the Capital Project bonds that you did. So, I'll go through that briefly. In brief, it went very well. The interest rates that you locked in today were very low, near all-time lows, and better than anticipated. As you can see on page one of that handout, interest rates have dropped over the last several months, and again, since mid-December, even the last time the board met. With Scott here, interest rates have fallen even further. So, today, we were able to lock those rates in. On number, page two, are the three bids that came in over the auction period today. The winning bidder that you would be accepting tonight, that provided the lowest overall interest cost to the district, would be Roosevelt and Cross. They provided the lowest out of the other three bidders. And on the next page, you can see that those are the results of, those three bidders actually bid 26 different times during the auction period, and the auction period, which was set to end at 11:15, got extended several minutes beyond that because Roosevelt and Cross and Janie Montgomery Scott kept kind of battling back and forth, and each time they battled, they're lowering the cost of the district. So, we feel we got a very good bid today. Page four is what you'd be approving, as far as the bond issue. This is the series of 2016 bonds in the amount of $9,840,000. The interest rates provided by Roosevelt and Cross are in columns three and four, and the yield, which is the real net rate that the district pays, in column four ranges from 1.15% to 1.85%. So, again, very low interest rates, and all the numbers that you see here are lower than what Mr. Sheer from PFM presented to you last month. So, we came in well below those expectations. On page five is the sources and uses of funds, where those bonds will be used to pay the cost of issuance, and the balance would then be deposited into your Capital Projects account for the Montgomery Elementary School. And you can see in the middle of the page, the settlement date when the bonds will settle and the money will become available is February 25, and right below that, the yield of the issue is 1.66%. So, that's the borrowing rate that will be provided to the IRS for what the district's borrowing at, which is obviously tremendously low. And just wrapping up on page six, then, I think, as was presented last month, in the blue is step one of the two-step process to fund the capital project. So, that's now locked in, in the blue, and about a year from now, we'll be back to do the green section, the series of 2017 bonds, to finish out the remainder of the capital projects. The rest of this handout, then, is the debt summary of the district. Page eight, then, is some comparisons to other Pennsylvania issuers. In each case, your bonds that we locked in today did better on both an interest rate and a spread to the national index, so, again, very good. And finally, wanted to thank the Business Office for working very hard and getting us all the information we need and speaking with, and doing a very good job with it, with Moody's, which is at the very end of this, is your credit rating report. Again, the district has a very, very strong credit rating, AA2 with a positive outlook. So, you know, tremendous effort from your Business Office and a good reflection of the board's efforts in continuing the high performance financially of the district. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Again, we are very pleased with the results, and everything's in order, and your bond council's here with the resolution.
Any questions to the right?
Thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation, and I just want to echo your sentiments about our Business Office. Thank you for all of your work for this. Appreciate it.
Any questions to the left? Under bond insurance, one of the, you said, under the uses here, we don't have bond insurance?
No, because of the strong credit rating, so it was not needed.
I can also appreciate you mentioning the biggest challenges we face are health care costs, the pension reform problems, because that's part of your letter. Or is it Moody's? Yeah, even Moody recognizes our biggest problems. Appreciate that. All right. We did better than I anticipated, which is great. Saved some money. Any questions beyond that?
Something's changed, then?
This is changed. He read it. He read it changed.
Yeah. My name's Scott Mihook with the law firm, Eckhart Siemens, Chair Malat, the school district's bond council. What should have in front of you is also an updated resolution which reflects the pricing numbers that John just presented. The resolution under consideration tonight is for the incurrence of non-electoral debt in the amount of $9,840,000. That'll be evidenced by the school district's general obligation bond series of 2016. The resolution authorizes the district to accept the purchase proposal of Roosevelt and Cross Incorporated. They're out of New York, New York. As general obligation bonds, the security will be the school district's pledge of its full faith, credit, and taxing power. The bonds are subject to optional redemption at the school district's desire, if interest rates would be so beneficial, on February 15, 2021. So, between closing in February 15, 2021, there would not be an opportunity to refinance them, unless you did an advance refunding, which would be a possibility, but any time after that, you could refinance them at par, so 100%. And lastly, the resolution authorizes the proper officers of the school district to execute and deliver all the documents necessary for closing. I don't know if there's any questions, and we're doing the contents of the ordinance.
You really think it's going to get better? I don't think so either. It's pretty much the lowest we've ever seen it.
It's pretty hard to beat 1.91.
I mean, that is pretty seriously low. All right, so we have a motion on the floor. We have a first and a second. Any other questions for them? All those in favor? Opposed? It's approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move back to letter A of the superintendent's report. Recommend approval of an agreement for tuition in lieu of free and appropriate education.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Prokowsky? Do you want to do, we need to do a roll call on this?
I mean, everybody said yes, but do you need a roll call?
Well, it was unanimous, except for Mr. Schilling. Is that enough, or you want to voice that?
No, I think we're good.
You sure?
Yes, I guess.
Yeah, I thought so. Okay. Thank you, though. It's a good point to make. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Go ahead.
Recommend approval of an agreement for tuition in lieu of free and appropriate education for student 121162, whose name is on file in the office of the superintendent. Recommend approval of settlement agreement for students 121163 and 1211608, whose names are on file in the office of the superintendent.
Motion by Mr. Kerr, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the waiver of tuition for the International Friendship Exchange student from Germany, student 1211607, for the 2015-16 school year.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of the reclassifying, the second advisor position for the Robotics Club, from an independent contractor position to an official extra-duty position per item 0316.
Motion by Mrs. Prokowsky, seconded by Mrs. Murphy. Comments or questions? Is this retro? Is this retroactive?
Yeah, this would be for the current year. We'll have the hiring on for February, assuming that the board votes to approve this.
Gotcha. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Position approved.
Recommend approval to raise the extra-duty group level of the Future Business Leaders of America, FBLA, and its corresponding advisor position from 2 to 3, per item 0316.
So, moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mrs. Prokowsky. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approving the adoption of the preliminary general fund budget for the 2016-2017 school year totaling $250,000. 2016-2017 school year totaling $250,123,639, and authorize the administration to apply for the exceptions from the Act I tax limitation, for which the district is eligible per the attached resolution, BA 4A through B.
So moved. Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mrs. Leonard. Comments or questions?
Mr. Shapinski, I just want to state that I really don't agree with applying for the exceptions this year. We've got a 2.4% Act I index. We've got a lot of challenging dynamics in the economy, a senior population that's struggling with no increase in Social Security. I think that, you know, the Finance Committee is going to do some good work in the next couple of months, and I know the board has a history of authorizing or applying for these exceptions and then not taking them. But I'm just fundamentally, at this point, opposed to applying for them, knowing that I can in good faith support a budget that's above the Act I index. So, I'm going to be voting no this evening.
Well, let's ask a question. Mrs. Prokowski, want to make comment to this before?
Yeah, I want to say is, I do view it as a wish list, and we will take out. Or I won't.
Well, let me ask you a question, since we have a... You made the nomination, right? And then you seconded it? You were the second person? Do we want to make a motion to modify and separate these two things out? In other words, we keep the general fund budget, preliminary budget, as a separate issue compared to applying for the exceptions?
I'd appreciate that.
Well, because then we can move forward. I mean, Mr. Diazio says yes. Problems there?
It doesn't matter.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, is that agreeable, to make that motion?
I understand. How would you do that?
I would make a motion that says recommend approval of the preliminary general fund budget for 2016-2017 totaling $250,123,639, per BA 4AB. And then I make a second motion for the Act I exceptions. If that's an issue.
Extending the time of...
Fair enough.
Isn't there a certain amount of time that you have to apply for them?
Well, we've always applied for the exceptions. We've never used them.
I know that.
I don't have any intention of approving a budget that uses them unless we need it for some serious reason that we're not prepared to deal with, and already nailed. I mean, we're stuck dealing with so many other things.
Why would we preclude ourselves from that option?
Right, that's the issue.
Absolutely. Why wouldn't we put a safety blanket under it, just in case? Just in case?
Okay. Well, so much for that idea. Okay. We have a motion and a second. We're going to move forward. I call a roll call, please.
Can you clarify, Mr. Shapinski, what the resolution is going to be?
The motion stands as is, as written.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call. Mr. Kerr.
Aye.
Mrs. Prokowski.
Aye.
Mrs. Murphy.
Aye.
Mrs. Leonard.
Aye.
Mrs. Charnock.
Aye.
Mr. Diazio.
No.
Mr. Schilling is absent. Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Shapinski?
Aye.
Motion carries, 7-1.
Keep going.
Recommend acceptance of the gifts to the district as listed.
Motion by Ms. Charnock, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or question?
Mr. Schilling, thanks.
Yeah, that's right. That's Johnny's specialty. All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gives are accepted. Thank you.
Recommend approval of personnel items as listed A through C.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Kerr. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Recommend approval of student travel per Item BA 8.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Murphy, seconded by Mr. Diazio. Comments or questions? The way I read that first motion, we have 35 chaperones, adult chaperones, and less kids. Did I read that right? Under that? I just want to make sure of that. It was the first one. It says, it says we have...
23 jazz band students.
23 jazz band, and we have 35 parents going.
35 parent chaperones.
That is correct?
Yeah, those are parents of the students that are going along.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I read that right.
Absolutely.
I was hoping that wasn't a mistake. I was just making sure that was written in the right order.
The movies.
Yeah. I mean, I get that. I totally get that. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Let's move forward.
Recommend approval of contracts per Item BA 9A through B, copies of which are on file in the office of Business Administration.
Motion by Mr. Kerr.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Comments or questions?
Got a question.
Absolutely.
On... I think I answered my question earlier. Never...
Okay. I thought maybe you were going to ask about the online library stuff.
No, tell me about it, though.
No, I'll let Dr. Holden tell you about it. It's just an online access source. We have to pay a fee to get online. I mean, access to it. That's what it is. Somebody else has put it together for us. All right, I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is approved.
Recommend approval of alternative placements per Item BA 10, copies of which are on file in the office of Special Education.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kerr, seconded by Mrs. Prokowski. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Let's move forward with our finance report. Mr. Sharack.
Thank you, Mr. President. This report is through the month of December 2015. Cash receipts in December totaled $4,388,169.78.